Well, good morning, everyone. Thanks for coming this morning. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, meeting documents are available for review this morning down next to Commissioner Heiburger. And just a reminder to silence your cell phone. And Craig is here this morning if you need a listening device. So that takes us to routine business. First, I'd consider a motion to amend the agenda to correct a typographical error in item 6Q. Correct parcel ID incorrectly listed as 58549 to the correct parcel ID 58489.
Move for approval to amend. Second?
It's motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
It's the same with dyslexia.
The next item is to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from March 3, 2020.
So moved. Second?
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $403,641.76.
Pay the bills.
Motion in a second. Any comments?
Madam Chair, I'd just point out that hand sanitizer appears a few times in the bills.
Yes. We have some available in the room if folks would like to use them. Alright, so it's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, there's some reports here for your review. We have the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office report for February 2020, the Minnehaha County Highway Monthly Construction Project update, and the Minnehaha County Coroner Report for January 2020. It takes us to personnel actions. Consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Move for approval?
Second?
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now, we have a number of abatements that we're going to address, and I think we can address them in a couple of different groupings, but I'm gonna let you help us through that part. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Chris Lilla, Equalization Office. The first abatement is SD DOT parcel number 66784, property tax $47,518.39. This one here is just a property that was acquired by the state after the legal assessment date. So again, per state law, once an exempt entity takes possession of a property for 16 days or more of that month, that month plus any preceding months are abatable. So I recommend this one for approval.
Motion to approve A.
Second?
Motion in a second. Any comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure how you want me to address this. B, C, D, G, H, I, J, K, L, and M are all the same situation, and I'll touch on those and I'll read those out. Do you want me to handle those kind of as one grouping?
That'd be fine, thank you.
Alright, item B, parcel number 10260 is an abatement for property tax of $1,736.09. Item C is parcel number 69752 for a property tax abatement of $1,198.17. Item D, parcel number 69193, property tax abatement in the amount of $831.38. Item G, property tax abatement for parcel 12159 of $1,229.47. Item H is an abatement for parcel number 56059 in the amount of $417.80. Item I is for parcel number 74748, property tax abatement in the amount of $1,317.89. Item J is for parcel number 70756, property tax abatement for $1,050.21. Item K is for parcel 59354, property tax abatement of $784.80. Item L is for parcel number 58498, property tax abatement of $1,567.78. Item M is for parcel 16402, property tax abatement of $1,083.12. It's a lot. Alright, these ones here, this is, and I'll take responsibility, this is my error, my office's error. These folks had came in, made application last year, January, February, March, to the Treasurer's Office for freeze. Pam condenses all of those, gives us a spreadsheet of these properties that she's received applications. She calls that income data and says these ones all qualify versus for the income requirement, sends that list to my office. My office at that time, we take a look at that property value because there's a limitation of the property's value. At the time, these 10 individuals, their current assessed value exceeded the limitation of the law. So, we marked them on that spreadsheet for Pam and said, "These people do not qualify." We sent that list back. At that time, we went into the system and removed the coding from these parcels. Well, you roll ahead about three weeks through Pam and State's Attorney and myself discussing that these people had all received it in a prior year, so regardless of their home's value, they continue to get it. So we put them on the list, brought them to you in April. You approved them for elderly freeze, and through that appeal program that Minnehaha County uses, whenever there's a board change there, it automatically writes those values back into the AS400. Well, since we'd removed the code, it didn't know where to write that value. So, they were not valued at their frozen base value for 19 pay 20. So, once we got the tax notices and I got a call from one of them, I realized what happened. So, I initiated abatements on all 10 of these. They should've got it. They were approved. It was just a mix-up of the coding. So, this is reprimanding all of those.
Did you say that we'd already approved these before?
You did approve them.
So then my question is, why are we approving them again? If we've already approved them once, do we have to do it twice?
They didn't get it entered. You approved them to receive the elderly freeze. We failed to code it in the program, so therefore, when it went, they got a higher tax bill than what they should have.
I understand that part, but I'm just... I think the issue is because the taxation or statement went out with the incorrect value on it. We have to fix that.
Yep, yep. So, I take full responsibility for that. Again, I would think I was three weeks on the job when I was working in these software programs that I didn't know how they interacted, and that's my responsibility. So, all of those are the exact same situation. Jean had some discussion on your documents. The first three state that there was an error made, and I've got the actual applications. And I checked two boxes. There's only limited criteria as to why an abatement can be possible. Obviously, the applicant having otherwise qualified for the assessment freeze or disabled freeze but missed the deadline. Well, they didn't really miss the deadline, but they were qualified. So that box is checked. And then I checked the top box that an error has been made in identifying entry or description of the real property and entering the valuation of the real property. I checked that box because that is my error, and then I took it upon myself to sign these abatements so I didn't have 10 elderly folks coming in to give me their signatures and all that. I just took the ball and ran with it. So, there was some miscommunication in your documents where the top three were entered as an error, but the remaining seven were entered with the bottom description. So, just a typo on your memorandum summation of these. The actual forms were all done exactly uniformly, so.
Any question about that? We did some digging, and just, you know, any time you've got a process, there's always opportunity for improvement, and so I learned a bunch of things yesterday, I can tell you that. And so, we'll try to kind of make sure that in the future, when we might see slightly different forms or something, but we should be able to address this. But just, that's why they're not listed consecutively on our agenda, so. Are there any other questions regarding this? So I think what we're looking for is a motion to approve B, C, D, G, H, I, J, K, L, and M.
Correct.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, whoa, sorry. Roll call vote.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so I think that takes us back to, we have E, F, and N left.
Yep, E, F, and N are all the same situation again. Two of those were initiated through Pam's office, so the actual forms again are a little bit different. She's using the older abatement forms. But item E is parcel number 48405, an abatement amount of $1,307.58. Item F is a parcel number 35043 for an abatement tax amount of $614.26. Item N is for parcel 26162 for an abatement tax amount of $385.49. These ones are not the same situation as the first ones. These ones are actual individuals who just missed the deadline to make application for the elderly or disabled tax freeze. And in those instances, again, state law says if you would've qualified but missed the deadline, you are allowed to request an abatement, and they have. I recommend them for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second?
Motion in a second to approve E, F, and N?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, all in, or roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Alright, you only have three left.
Well, a couple. Item O and P are the same parcel number, but it crosses over two years. They're for a veteran's exemption. Again, if a veteran would've qualified but missed the application deadline, they can request an abatement. So, for the first parcel, 80799, for the 2018 property taxes, obviously, that's just a partial year. We're abating, requesting an abatement of $146. For the 2019 year, same parcel number 80799, we're requesting an abatement for property taxes in the amount of $1,861.50. Let's see, I think we can do Q is the same. This one is the one that you've corrected. This is for parcel number 58489, same situation. It's just a veteran that would've qualified but missed the application deadline. This is for the 2019 property taxes in the amount of $2,757.09.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
A question. How can we abate the 2018 taxes? Can we abate the 1918 taxes?
Nope, we can go back. The verbiage is very, very hard to interpret. Essentially, it's three, or four, or even possibly five years depending on timing of events and qualifications. Maggie and I have spent a lot of time going back through that law. Typical rule of thumb is you can go back three years. That's pretty much a given, but sometimes it's four and sometimes it's going into the fifth. I can't remember the exact verbiage. It's when the prob, three years from when the property taxes would've became delinquent. So, you gotta sit down with a calendar and some...
Madam Chair? One more question on the one 80799. We're abating the full amount of the taxes, is that...
Nope, it's not the full amount. Their first $100,000 of value is exempt from their tax bill. So, this tax bill only represents the $100,000, the first $100,000 of their value. I'm not sure what their value was. I could look and get up. But if, again, if you owned a property that was $250,000, $100,000 would be exempt, you'd still pay tax on $150,000 of value, and that has changed this year.
$114,000 value, you're only paying tax on $14,000.
Correct. And that has changed as of July 1 of this year. That veteran's exemption has increased to $150,000.
Okay, so in the case of 80799?
Yep.
That is...
That's the $100,000.
...for paying the whole property tax. Interesting.
Good questions. Any other questions? Alright, entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'm not certain I want to vote for 80799. And, I mean, it's, in my opinion, we have people all the time that want us to go back and abate taxes from previous years. And I don't want to get in that habit, so I...
Okay, well, we can parcel these out, and we can just, I entertain a motion on O and P.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Motion in a second on O and P. Any other comments or questions? Alright, roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth? Bender?
Motion passes four to one. So now I'd entertain a motion on Q.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Motion in a second. Any questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay.
Item R, parcel number 90901, this is different than the veteran. This is a surviving spouse of a veteran. So if a veteran that is receiving the disabled veterans passes away and that surviving spouse continues to remain unremarried and living in that residence, they can continue to get that veteran's exemption. So, we're requesting, in this instance, the property tax abatement of $2,392.50 for a surviving spouse.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Motion in a second. Questions, comments? Roll call vote.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Item S, this one here is a little different animal. This one here is really outside of my wheelhouse or even my office's responsibility. I'll handle the abatement on this one here. This one here is for parcel number 89799. This is for a 2019 paraplegic tax reduction. This is not an exemption. This is a reduction. Again, I had to do some research on this. I think we've only got one in the county. I had one in my prior county a number of years ago, and they'd passed away, so I hadn't had to deal with it for a long time. So when this person came in, well, last year, to inquire about it, we had to do a lot of research. My office is really not involved in this one at all. This is, if you are paraplegic and your income requirements, or your income meets the guidelines, they're basically allowed a, depending on, it's a tiered system. If their income is under a certain amount, they are 100% exempt. If their income meets another level, there's so much taxable, and I'm gonna, I don't know those, I don't deal with those. These are made directly to the auditor's office. The only reason my part is in there is I'm supposed to verify that the property they're residing in meets their needs as a paraplegic. And I've called Department of Revenue on that and asked them for clarification on what those needs are. And they said, "Well, does it have wheelchair ramps? Are their cupboards lowered? Are they this or that?" And I said, "Well, am I to decide that if they're living in a house, even if they don't have that, that we shouldn't offer this?" I mean, they're living, and if they bought the house, they're, why am I even part of this? And they actually concurred with me that I'm not. This is simply a reduction of taxes, not an exemption. So, the auditor's office, she came in again this year, and we'd taken her down to the auditor's office, and they pushed this through because she would've, they missed applying it or something. I don't even know. So, they're requesting an abatement of $2,727.60.
So, just to be clear, I mean, when we look at the form that's available to us, it shows that you are recommending this for approval.
Yep, because they pushed it through as an abatement, and I'm required by codified law to recommend either approval or denial. And this one is valid. I mean, I've worked with this individual, but again, I'm responsible to recommend exemptions. And that, this is not an exemption. This is a tax reduction. There's a difference in the verbiage in the state law. So, I have no issues making a recommendation. It's all valid and qualifying.
Any questions? Alright, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second?
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth? Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger? Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Alright, so that takes us to our next item. Item 7, authorize the auditor to post notice of hearing on March 24, 2020 to consider 2019 budget carryovers and 2020 budget supplements.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. I am before you this morning to request authorization to post this notice of a budget hearing to be held on March 24 to consider 2019 carryovers and 2020 budget supplements in the amount of $761,550.41 in the general fund and $15,299,382.11 in special revenue funds.
Any questions for Kim? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to post the notice of hearing, March 24.
Second?
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, item 8 is planning and zoning. Notices, and there are none. And item 9, petition for compromise of lien, there are none. Takes us to our opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here today who would like to come forward to speak? Alright, seeing none. That will take us to regular business. And first item, item 10 is to consider a proclamation declaring March 14, 2020, St. Patrick's Day in Minnehaha County. Justin Bentus, good morning. Maybe you're Justin O. Bentus today.
Maybe. I'll go with it. Justin Bentus, Sioux Falls Chamber. Val actually asked me to come down and read this proclamation, so I'll get right to it. "Whereas we be Irish men and women all this day of national celebration at home in Ireland and in homelands throughout the world. And whereas the joyous unity of St. Patrick's Day reminds us all of our shared heritage and membership in a global family. And whereas today we honor the patron saint of Ireland of his great message of love and peace to one another. Whereas celebrations are in order for an expression of culture and heritage and music, dance, poetry, games, and just a wee bit of green beer raised in a toast. Whereas green silliness abounds as you shed your troubles by the road for a chance of good cheer and a wearing of green. And then this we proclaim as leprechauns are dancing and the joy that's everywhere with luck as your companion. From deep in our hearts we treasure our strong community spirit and tradition of welcome and care for one another. And thank God for the Irish who give us St. Pat to bring us together a wearing a green hat. Then shout and proclaim for the whole world is Irish on the 14th day of March."
I love that proclamation. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second?
Since Commissioner Barth is the only one that wore green today, he should get to make the motion.
Madam Chair, being as you love the proclamation, I am scheduled to be reading this during the painting of Shamrick. I'd be happy to have you substitute for me.
Well, I would certainly not want to deprive you of that joy and privilege, but we can talk about it.
The only thing I get to do around here.
Alright, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, so we go from St. Patrick's Day to flood forecasting and coronavirus update. So that kind of gives you a flavor for what happens at the county. Good morning.
Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. Flood update. I'll just go back a little bit and tell you what we've been planning for. Obviously, with the forecasts, we've been having, this fall, we really amped up our preparedness, prepared extra sandbags, which is finished up right now. There's 20,000 sandbags in a secure location. And if there's a need for public infrastructure, we'll use that first. And if there's a need for the public, we'll start distributing them as needed. But what we're seeing right now has been incredible, the way the weather's been. It's perfect for what we need with the lack of moisture. The Sioux River is still at flood stage, but it's generally the low-lying areas that are being affected right now. There has been some issues with an ice jam up by Dell Rapids. I believe that might've broke loose last night, so the river level is rising. Expected to maybe reach minor flood stage at north of I-90 sometime today, which really doesn't cause a lot of concern considering what we've been through in the past year. So, basically, everything's looking good unless we should get a large amount of moisture coming up, a big rain event. We could be effective, but the weather's been perfect. And luckily for me, with what's going on with Sandy coming in, it's just been a good thing. So, I don't know if you guys have any questions or specifics on what we've been doing to prepare. I can go into more detail or whatever you, however you want to direct this, so.
Questions for Jason? Commissioner Karski?
Just better to be prepared and not need it than vice versa.
Yeah, and you know, one of the things we did, we had meetings with the city of Sioux Falls since early winter, once a month, and what came out, the one, many good things came out of the meeting, but one thing that came out of the meeting, and I've talked to Commissioner Bender about this, is the need to have pre-made sandbags this year. So we found a heated facility with the help of you guys, and we rented that, the city rented it, and did some inmate labor, and they made 20,000 sandbags within a week. And if we need those, we're gonna put those where we can. But right now, it's not looking like we will, but we have it there. And that's kind of the one thing we failed on last year a little bit, was not having those prepared ahead of time, but it was a pretty unique event, so.
It's hard to store sandbags, too.
It is. It was hard to find this place. We got really lucky when we did find it, and it worked out really well, so.
Commissioner Barth?
Poor Jason. It's been a disaster since he got this job. In the parking lot, you know, and it appears that there's really no letup as we go on to the next issue, but traditionally baptisms are with water, so.
Just a comment on how disasters may be following me. I took a vacation to Arizona, and I was doing some golfing, and the first day on the golf course, I was evacuated from the golf course because of a flash flood. That was interesting. It must've rained out in the mountains that morning pretty heavy, and about 3 o'clock, we barely made it off the golf course because of the flash flood, so.
A little thunderhead following you around, or...
Something is, obviously, so.
Well, thank you for your work. I really, I think he's done a great job, especially being thrown into the fire, so to speak.
The work you've done. So, the sandbags that you alluded to, are they available to citizens, if citizens are...
Not at this point. It's for public infrastructure. So, if, say, like, for example, in the county, if the Renner Fire Department would need some sandbags, what we would do is get them up there to them instead of bringing inmates out to the Renner area to fill them. We would just deliver them to them. If the city of Sioux Falls needs them for some of their public infrastructure, we would take those and use them. If we don't need them, which it doesn't likely, we're gonna need that many right now, if the public were to come in, yes, we would allow the public to have that, if there was a need.
And if public is looking for sandbags, do you recommend they call 211, or do they go to Menards, or...
Well, they can call 211. We haven't set that up yet. That is in the plans when there is a need. I've had a couple calls about a month ago for sandbags. The plan is for me is maybe to just dump a pile of sand in my lot and allow people to come in if they need some sandbags and give them the sandbags for free, because we do have quite a stockpile of them.
Okay. So if there is a weather event that they can reach out either directly to emergency management?
Yeah, yep, yep. And I haven't discussed that with 211 yet, but that's kind of the next, if there is an event, that's kind of our next step.
I know 211 was invaluable last year during...
They are. They're an incredible resource for us, and you know, now they're covering like 15 counties, and they're expanding quite rapidly, and it's a good organization to have, so.
Alright, anything else? Okay, we can move on to coronavirus then.
Alright.
Good morning. I'm Sandy France, Public Health Manager with the city. I hope I'm not that little gray rain cloud that is following Jason today. So, thank you for the opportunity to come visit with you a little bit about some of the activities we've been doing with regards to coronavirus or COVID-19. First of all, I do want to confirm that at this point, we do not have any cases of coronavirus that have been confirmed at the state lab in South Dakota. They are updating their website. They do have a website connected to their Department of Health page that they update daily, and I believe it's mid-afternoon with the number of tests that they've done. So you do have a way of keeping an eye on testing and what those results have been. As far as our activities have been concerned, they really do kind of fall into three buckets. That of situational awareness, planning and preparedness, and communications. With regard to situational awareness, we began partnering with state and local and federal partners with regards to this topic in January. We've been keeping an eye on this for quite a while. And I do want to just remind everybody that while our health department will be the lead response agency within our community of the city of Sioux Falls, by state statute and duty of authorities, the state of South Dakota, the State Department of Health, is the lead agency for response to disease investigations and notifications. So, we'll be doing our work at the city in partnership with the county, but we will be supporting and following the lead of the State Department of Health. We've been also working with our healthcare entities and partners, response partners, to help monitor levels of PPE in the community, making sure... to help monitor levels of PPE in the community, making sure that if people need access to supplies that the state has in a cache, that we can help them supply, access those supplies through requests. With regards to planning, we have established a COVID-19 planning committee, and that's being made up right now of some of our leadership within the health department, the city emergency manager, and myself. We looked at all of our plans that we used in 2009 and 2010, when we did H1N1, again in 2014, when we had our concerns with the potential Ebola in, in the United States, and then again in 2015, when we worked with measles. So I mean, these are planning, planning processes that we've been doing for a number of years, not only in the city level, but across the county, and a number of agencies and partner organizations have really just kept up the work that they started, you know, 15 years ago when we started talking pandemics. And, and we've gotten those plans out, we've looked at them, we continue to monitor CDC guidance and, you know, make sure that what we're doing and looking at response reflects what the current guidance is, knowing that what we do for response will be based on CDC guidance and recommendations in partnership with the State Department of Health. Last week, we hosted a meeting that we invited a number of city and community response agencies. So in addition to city leadership, Jason attended the meeting, Sheriff Milstead was there, Warden Mattson, we had representation from Metro Communications, the Sioux Falls and Bishop O'Gorman School Systems, 211, and Department of Health, as well as representatives from our hospital systems of ERA and Sanford. All these agencies are doing planning, but we recognize that what we do as planning as individuals impacts each other within the community. So really, our goal of that meeting was to have everyone sit down and share where they are with their activities, and then reinforce conversations around the fact that at this time, we don't have a vaccine. So the, the message we're continuing to carry forward is we have to look at community mitigation methods. So when we have this disease in, in the state, which we're slowly being surrounded by it, you know, with 35 states and the District of Columbia reporting positive cases as of noon yesterday, that we, that we know that we will come together with a consistent community plan to look at, how do we have conversations around social distancing, practicing good respiratory hygiene, and enhanced environmental cleaning, which is really the things we can focus on at this time. With regard to communications, we're holding regular calls with the State Department of Health to make sure that we're sharing information in a timely and responsive manner. We have established a website page on the sioufals.org/health page that has information on coronavirus. It will also provide you a link to the State Department of Health's webpage on coronavirus, as well as the CDC. And I do encourage you, when you're looking for information, to use the State Department of Health website, to use the CDC sites. Those are credible sites to get your information from. In addition, we put some fact sheets out there, some of them from the CDC, some that we've pulled together on our own to help answer community questions regarding this illness. We're sending out situation briefs, which I do believe Jason is sending along to you. Those are going out two to three times a week with current information on it. And then this week, we'll be meeting again with our hospital systems, as well as the State Department of Health, to look at more of a shared communications plan. So there have, I will entertain any questions. I do, did want to talk about one of the things we talked about last Friday, and the fact that, at our meeting, that sometimes the information that's being reported in, in national media does not necessarily agree with what you're seeing on the CDC's website. And part of the reason for that is, so State Department of Health have the ability to test for this illness. When they have a positive, they're releasing information that they have a positive. That is considered a preliminary positive until that sample is tested at the CDC. So sometimes states are saying, we have cases before you see it reflected on the CDC's website, and that's because the CDC doesn't confirm it onto their website until they've confirmed the testing. So there's a little bit of a lag in some of the information. And with that, I, I believe you probably all received the update yesterday. So as of noon yesterday, 423 reported cases of COVID with 19 deaths in 35 states, as well as the District of Columbia. Globally, I went to the World Health Organization this morning and looked up numbers. Cases right now globally are just over 113,000 cases in 110 countries, territories, and areas. If you look at the numbers being reported, 92.2% of those cases rest in China, Iran, Italy, and the Republic of Korea. And then the rest are really spread globally. So I think the next fair question is, so what does that mean for me? What, what do I need to do? And so again, what we're reminding everyone is that this virus is transmitted very similar to the virus that causes influenza. So it's, it's a droplet, and we need to be concerned also about contact. So it's back to those respiratory hygiene methods, you know, the things that our mom taught us since we were this high. You need to cover your cough, you know, or use a Kleenex and throw it away. You need to wash your hands effectively with soap for 20 seconds, so sing Happy Birthday twice, or twinkle, twinkle little star, find a tune that you enjoy. And certainly, by all means, encourage people that if they're not feeling well, that they need to stay home, so that we are keeping people isolated from each other. Some of the work we've done specifically with regard to the city, and I would certainly encourage your agencies to do, is we pulled out our continuity of operations plans, all those plans that we made in 2019. Your organization did that planning, you know, we sat beside each other and did those things. Look at what's essential. Look at what, what is critical in the work that you do. Figure out how you're going to do it if we have to keep people at a distance from each other, and use that for your planning basis. So with that, I would entertain any questions.
Commissioner Karski.
Thank you for the report, Sandy. If you listen to the media reports, you would imagine that if you got COVID-19, you, you know, grow a third eye out of the middle of your forehead, or you're bleeding through your eyes and ears. What, a reasonably healthy individual, what are some of the symptoms? What, what's the?
It's a little bit similar to influenza. So you'll see cough, you'll see fever. The big difference with COVID-19 is it's causing shortness of breath. And it seems to be impacting this, what the CDC is saying, older people and people that are immunocompromised. And so the fair question is, what is an older person? And...
I'm afraid I know.
So I would have to reflect, the CDC is just defining older. It's not giving an age range. We do know that the old, as, as people are aging, we are seeing that they tend to have a little more serious case of, of the disease. But you're going to see symptoms very similar to influenza, so it's gonna be coughing, fever, but the shortness of breath is what seems to be setting this apart.
Okay.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I heard this morning on the news, and you never know what to trust, but they were saying that the numbers are starting to decrease in China with new cases.
They are. I did look at the World Health, it's an excellent point, the World Health Organization this morning, and China reported less than 45 cases, a new diagnosis yesterday, which is a significant drop. If you look at Hubei province, I mean, their numbers have been decreasing pretty much through February. But when we see, when we look at illnesses, we tend to see that they have kind of a lag phase where we just start to see them, and then they have a log phase where we see cases spreading, usually with a novel or a new illness, in a very logarithmic, so a steep phase, we're seeing a lot of new cases, and then it levels off. And, and I, I think what we're seeing in China now is, is that leveling off.
Other questions? Commissioner Barth.
Sandy, again, thank you for being here. And let's say that someone's been at home, and now they have shortness of breath. Where do they go to get tested? And...
So testing, the testing's actually all being done at the State Department of Health and peer, but test samples can be collected locally. What I would emphasize is if somebody has been traveling, or if they've been with someone that has a diagnosed case, or now they've expanded definitions and are allowing physicians to test people that just have, have had ongoing symptoms, and we really can't rule anything else out, to call your physician's office first, because the physician's offices need to know who's coming in so that they can give you instructions on how we can keep people who are potentially ill isolated or separated from other people that are receiving care. So call their clinic, and then follow their doctor's recommendations as to whether they should be evaluated at their clinic, or whether they need to seek care at a hospital. But the important piece is to call first so that healthcare providers know who's coming.
Thank you. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
As many of you know, my brother lives in Rome, Italy, and they're on complete lockdown now. His daughters have been out of school for 10 days or so. He says that the number of cases double every two or three days in the, in the country. And they've got some great technology for his kids to take classes and stuff where you see everyone's picture on your screen, and the teacher's there. But, you know, when it comes, it might come fast, and we have this lag time before it really comes here, that we can be prepared or more prepared. So keep up the great work, and keep telling us the truth, because there are a lot of rumors that people get going. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to say, you know, Sandy mentioned too, the county is working on this, both from a community standpoint and from a county employee standpoint, and looking at our plans about pandemics and continuity of operations. There's a group that met yesterday, and I, they'll be, we're gonna try to continue to communicate to people, because as Sandy emphasized, a lot of that is, you know, people are just concerned, and the more truthful information we can get out there, the more people can feel prepared. So we really appreciate you guys coming this morning. Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to the coroner's office, and these reports are not related.
Just a coincidence.
I did get my first phone call, should we be testing for it?
Good morning, everyone. So the question was, is kind of how have we been doing over the last year? And we wanted to look at the numbers that we've been having. Nineteen, as you may assume, based on the monthly reports you get, was not necessarily a good year for us. We saw an 8.6% increase in the overall number of cases that we had reported in the county. That translated into a 9.7% increase, of course, in the cases we actually accepted. And then, of course, that cascades into the number of cases we actually had to autopsy and external. The number of cases that we accept but don't look at slightly went down. And then the number of cases that we decline, which basically we call, saying, is this your case or not? Those, we also see an increase. So essentially, across the board, we saw increases, which was kind of a different, we had seen an increase a few years back, kind of dropped down a little bit for a couple of years, and then we've shot up last year. If we look at the causes of death of those that we examined, not all the phone calls, but those examined, drugs had a huge increase of a little over, almost 41%. Same in 2018, but just a bigger increase. Heart disease, traffics, gunshot wounds, hypertension, and ethanol. What's interesting, we actually saw some more natural deaths that we actually had to look at. That means these people are in their 50s and 40s and 30s that are dying of natural disease, not something else. So that's kind of an interesting transition that we have not been seeing. Of course, our matters of death are always of interest. If we look at those, one thing that we always get asked is, how many of your cases do you not know why they died for the manner of death? We always say we're below 5%, which they tell you, if you can stay below 5%, you're good. Our overall number was 2%. And of course, accidents and naturals are our two largest group. If we change that to those that are examined, where we actually needed to do an exam on those, our undetermined rate went up a little bit, up to 4%. But then again, we're still, naturals and accidents are kind of equal in both of those. As you can see, that we're actually examining more of our suicides when you look at the overall percentage. If we look at our natural deaths, you know, heart disease, hypertension, both of those are some sort of a heart disease, then respiratory, and then CNS. And those are always kind of our top four that we see routinely. We don't see much else. On occasion, we will. If we look at our accidental deaths, the question is, is why are we, you know, what is the number one accident? Of course, with our drug problem right now, drugs are our number one accidental deaths, same as last year. Traffics would be next, followed by some positional asphyxes, and then drownings. We did see a slight bump in drownings this year, or 19 versus 18. Talking about drug deaths, let's take a look at those, because there's been a transition. What we used to see a fair amount of, and this is a very busy diagram, we try to put a fair number of years in this, we've always seen meth, and we always unfortunately seem to be having a baseline number of those, and that's not changed. What we've seen over the last few years is a transition from heroin and desire, or drug opiates, prescription opiates, to now we're seeing fentanyl. Majority of this fentanyl is illicit made, is not pharmaceutical made, and we peaked last year at 12 cases. We had no heroin and no prescription opiates. So that's a big transition away from those. Now, a lot of those places and communities had huge spikes in their prescription opiates. We never really had that. 2016 was our bad year. I think we had five that year. I guess if you increased our population to equal a bigger city, it might look like a bigger spike. So for us, it wasn't that bad. But the fentanyl is the number one problem we're having right now. We are starting to see a few more heroins try to creep back in, but fentanyl seems to still be hanging in there. Looking at our suicides, we had a bad year a few years ago, 27, 2018 was a little bit better. Unfortunately, 2019, we peaked back up a little bit. People are always asking, when do these occur? We almost never have a December peak. We, in 2018, it was November. 2019, it was October. And we had four deaths, that was the most we had in one. We had about three other months where we had three in one month. But we almost never see a peak in December. Ours usually is, is the fall with a minor peak in the spring. How those occurring, as always, gunshot wounds are predominantly, but we did see a peak in our hangings, and drugs are always kind of a third tier. The last thing we wanted to talk about is kind of looking forward, is what are we talking about that affects us as an agency? Of course, we've, we've talked about the coronavirus this morning. All of that is gonna be an issue. Hopefully, that won't affect us as an office. Hopefully, most of those are managed by the hospital. Toxicology costs, unfortunately, there was a 3% bump there. We can't, we've done good with that company to keep our costs low. We've looked at some ways to bring in some cases to run through us, which helps increase our numbers that we send to them, which gives us more of a break. So we're doing that for some of the other counties. Transport costs, as you know, we just saw a bump in that, so we are gonna expect that to deal with. In 2019, we had a savings, because we got the radiology x-ray unit. That dropped costs significantly to the county. What we bring in through the county and our other cases covers the maintenance fee on that, but basically, it's a one-time savings. You know, going forward, you're gonna have that baseline savings, but we're not gonna see another drop there. Kind of the last thing that we have to keep in mind when we're looking at an agency is, when you have a bad year like 19, you have to look back and say, okay, what have we been doing? If we look back over the years, the number of exams that we do has averaged 122. Last year, we had 163 exams, so that's a huge spike. But we look at those numbers, and we had really from 2015 to, till then, 15, 16, 17, 18, all those have been pretty much in that 124 range. Unfortunately, 19 was bigger. We see that in a lot of our other numbers as well. What does that mean for us as an agency? One of the things we have to go back to is budget. When we look at the original budget agreements we had, the county stepped up to pay more than the per diem, so that the forensic pathologist would be here in the county. Basically, it was almost 50/50. So per diem was based on 42 autopsies. You can see, we haven't had 42 autopsies in a long time. And so now, our per diem is actually pretty much equaling our budget. There's no longer that extra bump the county was giving to have the forensic pathologist sit in the county. And actually, actually, last year, when we look at the numbers, Sanford Hospital, when you look at that arrangement, lost by about $88,000. So it was a huge loss to Sanford. It's not, was never designed to be a loss to LCM Pathology or Sanford to have this arrangement. So don't know where we're gonna go with that. We'll have to look and see how 2020 is, but I can say that you look at 17, 18, it's pretty much even. Per diem and the amount coming in was pretty much even. So the county's getting a benefit, it no extra money out, which was, again, not the original agreement. Now, those agreements were reached before I was ever hired, so I had no say in those agreements. But I do just put out there that the 1% we've been getting in budget increases the last several years has not kept up with our cost and with the agreement that we had with the county. So we're gonna have to look at that as a forward thinking, what are we gonna do with that issue? You know, because again, it is a benefit to have me sit in this county. Prosecution, law enforcement officers love being able just to give a call, walk down to my office, or stuff like that, where that changes when you're not here. And so, any questions? Just a brief look at where we're going, where we've been at, where we're going. And I think, in all honesty, oh, one good news is that I am working with Sanford to get us a larger cooler and a larger morgue, which will allow us not to have to send cases out to be stored elsewhere, which is a cost of the county. So we're working on that. 21 might be the earliest we can get into their budget, but probably 22 or 23, we should see that come to fruition. And it'll incorporate some of the things the law enforcement have asked for in the morgue, that now that they don't get. It'll also, like I said, increase that storage capability, so we won't have to pay for outside storage, which we do now on occasion, so. Yes.
Commissioner Benega.
Dr. Snell, obviously, 2019 was a tough year for the ag economy.
Yes.
Is there a way that you identify the rural versus the urban caseload that you have, and is that part of the growth in the rural situations that we face?
We don't really look at separating the city of Sioux Falls from the rest of our county. When you look at overall, we really haven't noticed anything, just, you know, blares out to me. blares out to me. I don't have a mechanism in place to track that kind of material, or much less the staffing to kind of track that kind of differentiation. We do, if we notice trends and stuff, we do try to look at it, but we just really didn't notice anything that would tell us, you know, there was a transition in that. You know, the transition, I think, that we all see is, of course, this transition in the city area of the drugs that's going on here. And I think that's the biggest thing that's driving us right now. But, from an agricultural standpoint, there's nothing that sticks out to me.
I guess I'm curious, because when you talk to the people who are in the mental health field, the number of calls that they're getting has grown dramatically in the rural communities and the ag communities. So, I was wondering if there's a correlation in that?
Yeah, and we have to always keep in mind is that when you step outside this county, I never get a full picture of what's going on, because I just get whatever you were to pick up the phone and say, hey, can you take a look at this for me?
Right.
There's a lot of cases I know that occur that if it was in this county, I would have done a full exam on. Those counties to save money aren't. And then, I get a phone call saying, hey, what do we do? You know, we didn't do an autopsy. We thought we would do this to give us the answer, and it didn't give us the answer. What do we do? I do see a fair amount of that. And I think that would probably be one areas where we're not seeing the number of autopsies we probably should be seeing in those outlying counties, because it just costs money. It's not a, you know, it's twenty-one hundred dollars flat fee with test on top of that. So, you have five or six of those, that can mess up a small county's budget. And so, I know some of those smaller counties, they'll tell me, we're not sending you everything, we just can't. So, I guess that would be a way to say that we're seeing an effect of it. Which, in a way, is a blessing, because you look at my numbers for twenty nineteen, if I added another five or six cases each month, what would those numbers have been?
Commissioner Barth.
Thank you. Doctor, I was just in Washington DC at a conference of county officials, and I was at a breakout session on veterans issues. And they were saying a couple of things, that they have a hard time getting the right numbers on suicides amongst veterans because many are, you know, they HIPAA or whatever family preference, they don't say. And so, they oftentimes get like unintended death as, you know, where it wasn't on purpose by the decedent. But, they also said that the highest rate of veteran suicide was men between fifty-five and seventy-two. You know, if Gerald asked about people in the ag business, but do you keep track of, say, veterans that have ended their life?
We don't specifically look at veterans. And again, we run into that same problem because we rely on law enforcement and families to provide us information. And we don't always know if we're dealing with a veteran or not. And we do not have access to medical records at the VA. It's a, say it nicely, it's a pain in the butt to try to get them. And law enforcement deal with that as well. So, we don't really know how many of our suicides truly are veterans. Sometimes, we know that. But, again, I go back and look at our suicides, nothing really stood out, except for we did seem to see a little bit of an older population this year. Our population shifted a little bit. But, we're always, to be honest with you, the thirty to fifty range is always predominant for us. I think we shifted by about ten years in twenty nineteen. But, I can't say there's an increase in VA people.
Anything else? Well, thank you. We're very appreciative of the work you do. Thank you for coming this morning.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, that takes us to a presentation on the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society. Good morning, ladies.
Hello, I'm Corey Beatty, the executive director at the Sioux Falls Humane Society. This is Lex McKee. She's one of our humane officers, so she'll be joining me today.
Good morning.
Our, a lot of what we do, all of you already know, but we've kind of started to do some new things that we'd like you to be aware of. One of those, and he was talking about drug issues and things like that, I think they have this going down. Here we go. We still remain a no-kill open admission shelter, the Sioux Falls Humane Society. As much as our numbers continue to go up, we're at about ten thousand animals per year now, right around that amount. We have seen a very big jump in animals coming in from drug cases also. It's unfortunate for the people and their families. We also see children involved have been out doing a lot more cases. I'll let Lex talk about this in a little bit, as far as just drug cases, which cause neglect for children and animals. And so, we've taken in a lot more animals just because of that reason. We are trying to grow our foster program because we have people who maybe go into a treatment facility. We have not been able to at this time board any animals for anybody because we just don't have the space. So, that is one thing that we see a lot more of now. As far as our intakes, we have several ways of doing that. We get strays from the field, over the counter. We also have this night receiving kennel up at our, up at the shelter where people can come in after hours. For the most part, what we do is, we see people who do not want to look face to face in the daytime to give up their animals for whatever reason that might be. So, we do offer this just in case they need to do that, and for law enforcement, for any of the counties that we do handle. We have twenty-one contracts, including obviously Minnehaha, Lincoln County, the city of Sioux Falls, and then a lot of other ones outside the Sioux Falls area. So, we're a busy shelter. We do offer for children's and clients free boarding for them, for their animals. Usually, a lot of people won't even leave unless they take their animals with them. They're worried about how their animals are going to, are going to be, you know, if they leave their person. So, we have been boarding free for them. We also do so for the Red Cross, anything that's involved with them. And then, any abandonments we see, sometimes people abandon their pets in the field, sometimes they abandon them at a vet, you know, it just depends on where that's at. So, we do our best to try to do what we can there. We are, thank goodness, the announcement we have today is really great. We are span neutering every single animal that comes into our facility. They're also getting microchips and rabies vaccinations, which is really a huge step in the right direction. We see a lot of people who can't afford vaccinations for their animals, and all of a sudden, somebody gets bit, they find out, oh geez, we don't have rabies vaccinations for our animals, we couldn't afford it. So, then all of a sudden, you know, we have to go into that part and have people quarantined or having to go out and get rabies shots themselves. So, we're trying to at least protect the public from after the animals actually leave our facility, which is, which is a great thing. It also helps with microchips to find pets when they are lost so that we can get them back. We don't really want to keep people's animals. We like to get them back to their homes. So, these are the problems, I guess, we can see right now that are really affecting our business. Unvaccinated animals, we hope at some point to be able to go out, I guess I call it my bucket list item. I keep calling it that all the time. I want a mobile unit that we can go out into the communities and be able to offer vaccination clinics, information, just education for the public, microchips if those are needed, just in general, just kind of free ID tags for animals. Because it costs the county money when we go out. It costs us money for the boarding and the food and the medical or whatever. So, we're just trying to do anything we can to maybe keep them from coming in. And then, of course, unaltered animals that keep on producing. This year has been really bad for cats. I'll just let Lex touch on a couple situations that we dealt with, and then I'll return to the podium.
Yeah. Hi there. I'm Lex, I'm a humane officer. So, I go out in the field. I respond to a lot of different calls. Have any of you guys seen the show Hoarders? Yes. So, that happens. That's real. And a lot of the times, people do that with animals. We've had a couple cases where we've helped a town with some individuals that kind of got in over their head, when we're seeing high levels of ammonia, high levels of feces and urine in the home. And we're actually taking all of these cats that are not seeking, they're not getting the medical attention that they need. They're not getting the food they need, any of the attention that they need. And we're actually helping find them homes that are proper for them. So, there's actually a lot more of those cases that we do see than maybe the public is aware of. I definitely say, if you see something, or you hear something, or you know somebody that might have an issue, definitely, you know, reach out and see if we can get them some help. Sometimes, it starts as, I'm just going to help all these stray animals. I have a big heart. I love animals. And then, it gets, it goes kind of over the top. Financially, it's really expensive to care for that many animals. I have two cats myself, and yeah, they probably need their own job. But, a lot of, a lot of people just, they have good intentions, and then you have to worry about, you know, mental illness and all that other stuff. But, we have had a couple cases in this last year that have really, really kind of stretched us in how many animals that we can take in, how many homes that we can find. And unfortunately, we do see a higher level of cats coming into the shelter. So, it's, it is what it is. We're always working to see if we can find more foster homes, more programs, if we can get our adoption numbers up. It's definitely one of those things where it's just, it's always a growing need. So, if you guys are looking for a cat or a dog or anything, you know, where the humane society is at. So, I'll turn it back over to Corey here.
One of the things, the things that Lex was talking about, you know, we're not talking about five or six cats. We're talking about eighty cats and a hundred and six cats and forty-nine cats and, you know, where counties or cities have actually come back in and had to dispose of the property because it's just completely ruined. We currently have someone in Minnehaha County that, and I'm hoping that that house got torn down so far, we hope. The actual gentleman that had this home, the cats took over the house and he lived in the garage. And so, we're seeing it. And it's not about, it's not about that we love cats so much that we want a hundred million of them. It's about mental illness. And so, we're going to be looking very carefully at that in the future, to see kind of how we can help in that manner too. Because it doesn't just, you know, it's not just about taking care of the animals. It's about taking care of the people who own them. Another problem that we are looking at a lot is just ordinances. People need to know more about our ordinances and what they can and cannot have. Financial issues, obviously. We need to have some low-cost programs for our people, our communities, so that if they are going to have an animal for a family member, they do need to make sure that they're up to date on everything. And then, being surrendered just for various reasons. We have some of the craziest reasons that people surrender their pets. You know, they shed, they bark, they meow too loud. I mean, these are the things that are, we just, okay, then we're glad that we have your animal, because it's obvious that you shouldn't have it. So, we're trying to work with education and reduce the number of surrenders that we do get.
And I think we do understand too, there are those important reasons that people do decide to surrender their animal, whether they know they financially can't take care of them, there's some kind of a medical situation that's going on, say, a family member has passed. So, we do understand that there are legitimate reasons for animals to be surrendered to us. And we definitely, obviously, would love to be the place that you come to. We want to help the community in any way that we can. And sometimes, that's one of those things that people just don't know where to go. So, you know, we'll bring in any animal that we need to. We want to help them, and we want to help the community.
Here's our statistics for right now. Eighty-six point three percent of the animals that come in were unaltered, which means they're not spayed and neutered. We do try to return all of the animals back as soon as we can, especially in the county. Usually, our officers, and Andy's not here today, they know the people that are in the county. They know the people who are in the cities that we cover. And so, they try to get them back before they come to the shelter, which is great. And also, people don't have to worry about their pets. So, this is just some more basically unaltered animals. This is the two thousand eighteen numbers. With our two thousand nineteen numbers, again, we're going to be, we've been fixing everything. So, we've tripled in our span neuter surgery in the shelter in two thousand nineteen. It's just unwanted litters. We have to get out there and do more education. People still think that hunting dogs cannot be fixed because they won't hunt, and that is not true. So, we have to educate people on that. You know, or the cute little French bulldog that costs five thousand dollars, we really don't need to breed it. Breeders do that. They're professionals. They need to do it the right way. And we hope that we can kind of bring those backyard breeders into compliance. Everybody kind of knows the reasons to span neuter, so I won't put much attention to this. But, it is cost effective for people to get their animals fixed all the way around, for the cities, the counties, for anybody that we work with. It helps, even though it's a big cost to our shelter. We do believe that in the long term, that it comes back to us. We love to show this little graphic, because this is really the truth of how things go. So, cats, if you look at, this is one mama cat. In the first year, she might have twelve, two, she'll have up to sixty-seven. In three years, three hundred and seventy-six. So, you look at the jump where cats have more cats and more cats. Same thing with dogs, although a little bit more so with dogs, only because they have bigger litters. So, this is something we like to show kids when we go out to schools too. And just show them that, you know, it's good to make sure that you're watching what's going on and help the parents to understand as well. As far as animals in general, obviously, everybody knows that we're kind of, you know, I think we're not sort of to work there, but we all love them. And they're kind of like our own kids. But, they have to be able to give, be given an opportunity to, for people to know that animals can really help them. We have been doing a lot more in our programs for veterans. We have seventeen dogs right now out to the National Search and Rescue Foundation that are being trained for bomb sniffers, cadaver, any kind of disasters, fires, those types of things. Animals who are shelter animals have been trained to do that. And so, we're trying to do our best. I'll let you talk about purled pups real quick, and then we'll come back to you.
So, everybody knows a naughty dog, right? A dog that jumps or chews on something or just doesn't want to listen. They're kind of stuck in their puppy phase. We have purled pups up at the South Dakota State Penitentiary, where we take some of what we call our naughty dogs that need just a little more attention, a little more training. Sometimes, it's as simple as teaching them how to walk on a leash properly. So, the inmates that are actually up there, they have the time that is required for these dogs. So, they actually do a lot of the basic training, sit, stay, heel. And sometimes, we'll have dogs come to us that they don't even know how to play. Have you ever had a dog that's a little mouthy? You want to go play fetch, and they're kind of taking your hand. It's kind of the basics that we'll, that we'll touch on. And we do everything, it's positive reinforcement. You do something good, we'll give you a treat. If you don't do it, then, you know, we're going to withhold that treat. So, it's a really nice program. We have quite a few dogs up there right now. And we understand that those dogs have to go to a special home. We do have, you know, applications for any of our animals that you'd be interested in adopting. With those, it's kind of a little more extensive. There are ones, it's like, you know, you have to have a certain, certain kind of fence, no kids, no other animals. They're just the ones that are a little harder to place, but they deserve a loving home, and we're willing to take the extra time. And thankfully, the South Dakota State Penitentiary is willing to help us with that.
These are some of the costs that we really want to let the commission know. What goes into dog adoption costs for us and cat adoption costs? And it's something to really look at, because this is all of the, these are all of the things that we do before an animal is put up for adoptions. So, if you look at the actual costs of that, you can see that some of our adoption prices, with cats right now, we have so many that we have what we call give and get. So, the person that is adopting the animal, if they pass all of our adoption application, they could actually name their price on cats, because we have so many. We do not let anybody that shouldn't have a cat adopt one. But, this is something that helps not only for the cats not to be stuck in the system, but it helps for them to find good homes for people who love animals, who maybe can't afford a two hundred dollar adoption fee. Same thing with dogs. We do have a couple of different things that go on. You know, we have some promotions that we do, depending on how many animals we have in. When we get really full, we try to make sure that, you know, to remain in no-kill shelter, which we will always be, we want to make sure that we have some options for people. So, we do have some, we don't call them sales, because we don't believe in the term sales regarding the animals. But, we do have some promotions that we do use. Our humane officers, obviously, these guys are the greatest people that I know. They see a lot, things you'll never forget. And they go out and help with a lot of things in our county. We do see an uptick in calls in two thousand nineteen for sure with these hoarders. But, one of the things that people mostly want is check, you know, check wellbeings, you know, stray dogs, obviously, barking dogs. You're not going to have dogs that don't bark, but you do have to take care of that if people do call in. And then, we've seen more arrests, fires, accidents, things like that, where we've had to go and retrieve animals.
So, neglect and cruelty, you know, we respond to both those. There's, it's kind of a fine line of what's the difference between cruelty and neglect, and the ordinances do explain what those are. Basically, if we're finding that we can go in and remove the animal, we certainly will. Oftentimes, we'll start with education. People don't always know that there's an ordinance out in the county that your animal can't run, whether it's a horse, dog, peacock, cat, whatever. It doesn't matter, it can't run. I just think, we really try to start with that education aspect. South Dakota codified law definition of neglect. I won't go into it, but basically, you're going to need that proper housing, food, water, sanitation conditions. And sometimes, people don't know that even out in the summer, that buddy has to have water at all times. Um, and, and sometimes people don't know that even out in the summer, um, that Buddy has to have water at all times. Um, or in the winter, frozen water doesn't constitute, uh, a good source of, um, of water for them. And this is actually, this dog is a case of, um, severe matting. You can see the before and after picture there. Uh, it's pretty extreme. That dog couldn't go to the bathroom properly. Um, and actually everything was just kind of getting matting and matted and compacted onto it. The dog smelled horrible, um, and that leads to secondary skin infections and just basic overall, um, health concerns for that dog. And, and anybody really that came into contact with that dog. Um, it was a very sad situation, but we did get him a home. More definitions here. Um, big paws canine, um, is kind of, kind of like paroled pups. Um, we work with big paws canine to find dogs that want to be, um, or that need that extra, um, what am I trying to say here? That extra time and attention to help them become service animals. Uh, we want to make sure that our veterans are taken care of. And a lot of times some of these dogs have the skills that they need to, to perform some of these duties, whether it's retrieving medication or, um, just being there for extra support. So we've had quite a few dogs that are go, have gone through the program, um, and have been successful. Here's that paroled pups, uh, just a couple of the dogs that have gone through there. Um, we do see quite a few go through, some of them take longer than others. Uh, but we're willing to take the time and, and be patient because we know that they have the ability to complete these programs.
I know, we try to keep these presentations close to ten minutes. So if you guys could just work on wrapping up, that'd be great, thanks.
We are. Um, this is really the last slide that we like to talk about. Um, we are going to be planning in addition to our facility. Um, not only just the need, but because we are the only one. Uh, and it doesn't look to be any different in the, in the near future. Um, right now, uh, we're looking at overpopulation, the social issues with drugs, uh, spay and neuter, obviously. Um, we do take on all of these costs. Um, as a humane society, we are a nonprofit and rely completely on public funding. In the future, we will be probably looking at some different contract things, but for now, we're going to be doing a capital campaign for this. Uh, the plans and construction will hopefully be within the next three to five years. Um, we do have to add quite a bit of space up there, uh, to be able to, you know, go into the future. So, um, right now we're looking, we're, uh, we don't even really know where we're looking as far as the money, but some of the figures that have come out in the long-term, five to ten is, is around ten million dollars. So, um, that said, we'll be very busy in the community, um, in everywhere, uh, fundraising and, uh, doing what we can to make sure that these animals continue to have homes. We won't build ourselves out of a problem, but we do have to make sure that they're, the care and the treatment of our animals is humane and that the public, uh, trusts us with doing that. So, that's it.
Any questions? Lot of great information. Thank you both so much for coming and for the work that you guys do.
Thank you.
All right. So that takes us to item fourteen, which is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County to provide Lincoln County Human Services Case Management. Good morning.
Jamie Phelps, Minnehaha County Human Services. Good morning. So this is our contract, uh, uh, annual contract renewal for Minnehaha County to provide casework services to, uh, Lincoln County. And, uh, some of the services, it basically it's a sixty-forty split. So, the caseworker spends time seeing some Minnehaha County stuff, cases up here, but also goes down to Lincoln County in the Canton office to see cases there to the people that are further south. Lincoln County pays for sixty percent of the position and benefits while Minnehaha County pays for forty percent. And, uh, some of the, uh, some of what's involved with that, uh, with that, with, uh, our services for that fee is to supervise that position, uh, paperwork and documentation, storage, and, uh, being able to do case, handle case reviews. We handle both, uh, emergency relief and hospital claims. And, uh, I think it's been mutually beneficial from the aspect that, you know, we've, we've had the history and knowledge and expertise to handle those medical claims and those can be really complicated at times and high dollar and, and high stake, uh, on budgets. And, um, as well as that, a lot of people from south of fifty-seventh street that are in Lincoln County, and we mainly serve, um, the five-seven-one-oh-eight, uh, zip code from there, when we look at numbers, uh, are able to come to our Sioux Falls office and obtain services rather than go all the way down to Canton and things like that. Um, so, uh, I think it's just been in general, a good example of how local governments can work together to better serve the public, you know, more efficiently and more effectively. And, um, so we're looking at, uh, getting approval to, to renew that contract. And I believe Olivia has the contract for you to sign should you decide to, to do so. Are there any, I think, I believe this is the thirteenth year of this, by the way.
Questions? Or Jamie?
I'm chair, I'll make a motion to have authorized you to sign this contract. That said, uh, in the beginning narrative, it's, the date is incorrect, the contract is correct. It talks about, uh, uh, well, it expires, the new contract, I guess expires in twenty-twenty-one, and it does say that in the contract. Sorry.
Okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions, comments?
I'd make one more comment.
Yes.
I was there when we signed the original one and we actually, I was not a member of the commission. Uh, we went to Canton and had a joint meeting in Canton at their courthouse.
Yeah, it's a great, it was kind of one of the initial real collaborative agreements between the counties, the two counties. And we've had a number of that have followed the same model. So, all right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that takes us to item fifteen, which is to consider a resolution to establish the Minnehaha County building permit fees effective May first, twenty-twenty. Kevin, good morning.
Yes, Kevin Huckman, County Planning Department. Uh, so I brought to you this, uh, as a briefing a couple of weeks ago. Uh, as you know, last year, late last year, we adopted the two thousand eighteen International Building Code families of codes. Uh, and to support the cost of implementing the codes and doing inspections, the county has a fee structure for, um, uh, for deciding what a building permit fee would cost. And we have that up on the screen now for our, our current valuation, uh, that was set in two thousand fifteen, which is in the center column there in the, in the left. Uh, typically past rates have been increased at a flat rate, a percentage. Uh, this year staff is re, uh, proposing a, a higher increase in percentage of the rate increase for finished space versus say the unfinished basement or the attached garage. As you see here, so the finished space for a new build will increase eight point five percent, where the attached garage will only increase one percent. Um, so if we scroll down to the next page, you'll see how that affects a typical house in the county. So the total increase, uh, of a new average house would be not quite six percent, um, for the upcoming increase, or sixty-five dollars for a new house. Um, all this information was presented to the Home Builders Association of Sioux Empire and they reviewed it and felt that the increases were reasonable at the, at the meeting. So the county commission should take action to approve or deny the resolution. And, uh, the new fee increase will become effective on May first. Is there any questions?
Questions? Comments? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment. This is not a revenue builder for the, for the county. This actually helps to cover the costs of the planning and zoning and the work that they do on their inspections and stuff. So it's not like we're trying to raise fees to make revenue.
Any other comments or questions? I think we had an opportunity to consider this since you brought it forward earlier, so I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Motion?
Second.
And a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Takes us to item sixteen, which is to consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign a land purchase agreement to acquire right-of-way for Highway Project Number twenty dash zero-one. DJ, good morning.
Morning Commissioners, DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. Uh, we have a culvert project that is, is going to be starting here soon. And, uh, our staff met out, or went out into the field and met with all the adjacent landowners to talk about the projects. And, uh, in this one that we're talking about, it's two and a half miles north of I ninety, just north of Valley Springs or just south of, of Garrettson. On the memo there, it's the one that's on the top right of the, of the three shown in maps. Uh, in meeting with the adjacent landowners, uh, they started discussing the right-of-way. We have a shortage of right-of-way on, on this corridor on, uh, County Highway one-oh-five, uh, where we only have, um, sixty-six feet of right-of-way. And so in, in meeting with the landowners, um, we brought up the idea of possibly purchasing right-of-way. And, uh, this landowner was, was open to the idea. And so we had an H lot drafted up and are purchasing the H lot from the landowner for the entire quarter mile that they own adjacent to the prop, or adjacent to the project. So, uh, with that, requesting authorization for the chairperson to execute the right-of-way purchase agreement.
Questions for DJ? Commissioner Barth?
So DJ, are we purchasing, uh, this on all, on the same side of the road?
It's all on one side of the road. It's on the east side of the road, yes.
So do we then move the, uh, the, the road over a little bit?
No, uh, so the road is centered on the section line on this corridor. And so ideally we would have an additional seventeen feet on both sides of the roadway to be able to build ditches and things like that. Um, this is more of like a corridor preservation purchase, where in the future, when we go and reconstruct this roadway, we'll already have the right-of-way purchased.
On that side.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions or comments? Good question.
I would move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item seventeen, which is to authorize the chair to sign the proposed plat for Track One Sierra Edition, subdividing the county's gravel pit. DJ?
Uh, Commissioners, the Highway Department has operated, or the county has operated a gravel pit uh, west of Ellis or west of Sioux Falls, uh, for several decades. And, uh, we have just over one hundred and sixteen acres, uh, that we've, that we've operated. We've mined just about seventy-eight acres or we actively have mined seventy-eight acres. On the exhibit there, that's the, the top section that's not circled in red. Um, and the bottom thirty-seven point two-two acres or the south thirty-seven acres has not been actively mined. There is gravel, uh, remaining in that section. And so, uh, we've had a lot of discussions through different building committee meetings about possibly selling, uh, declaring that thirty-seven point two-two acres, uh, declaring that surplus and selling it off. And so, uh, we move forward with creating a plat of that section. Uh, we call it Track One and, uh, looking for your authorization of the chairperson to sign the plat on the owner's certificate. Uh, so we can, uh, move forward in the coming weeks of declaring that surplus. I will mention that on the first page of the plat, which is page three of the, the memo, uh, that shows, uh, the exhibit of the Track One, there is an error on the roadway on the east side of the, of the, uh, property. It says four hundred and seventy-sixth Avenue. That's actually four hundred and sixty-seventh Avenue. So there's just, uh, transposed numbers there. Uh, the surveyor was contacted this morning. They are reprinting page one of this. Uh, but page two and page three, uh, that has the owner's certificate does not have any errors. And so we can sign that. Just know that the first page will be swapped out later this morning.
DJ, I have a question, uh, which honestly I never thought of until just looking at it now. Are there any building eligibilities on the properties?
No, there's no building eligibilities.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve with the understanding that the road numbers will be corrected.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That takes us to a legislative update. Craig Dewey.
Morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. We are in the final week of the, uh, regular legislative session before there is a two-week recess when the legislature will consider any vetoes issued by the governor. Uh, given that, uh, we are in the final week, uh, now, uh, over the next couple of days, uh, the legislature will be considering the budget, uh, which, uh, to my understanding, has not yet been released. I do have, uh, an update on several bills that are included in this update as far as some votes that took place yesterday as the, uh, chambers tried to clear their calendars. Uh, first off is Senate Bill Two, uh, that would, uh, provide full state funding for, uh, two-on-one services. That bill passed the full House, forty-four to twenty-two. Senate Bill Thirty-five, which would appropriate, uh, dollars for the veteran cemetery. That bill was needed to accept federal dollars, uh, for the project. An additional nine hundred thousand, that bill passed the House unanimously. Senate Bill Forty-six, which would allow a restoration of competency for, uh, criminal defendants, uh, to take place, passed the full House, sixty-four to twenty-two. And then Senate Bill One-Fifty-seven, which was brought forward at the request of the governor regarding zoning in, uh, different counties. Uh, that bill ended up passing the full House, forty-five to twenty-two. And as a reminder for the public, uh, Minnehaha County's, uh, zoning ordinances would have minimal, uh, changes, uh, made to them since the state bill essentially would bring, uh, state law in line with what Minnehaha County, uh, basically already has. There would be a few minor changes that the county, uh, would have to consider. And we continue to be in conversation with the Planning and Zoning Department to identify those. And then lastly, uh, Senate Bill Seventy, uh, deals with Spanish-language driver's license exams for the written portion of the test. Uh, that bill passed the full House, forty-four, or rather forty-two to twenty-four. Uh, if you do have any other questions regarding, uh, bills on this update or other parts of the legislative process, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I just have one, and that was Senate Bill Two passed. I was given, called last night and told Senate Bill Two failed. And so, I didn't go back and look it up just because I got a phone call last night that it had failed. I'm thrilled if it passed.
I took a look at the South Dakota Legislative Research Council's website and that's where I, uh, relied on that information. I will check here very quickly, uh, to reconfirm that.
Cindy, I, you know, we've thought it would pass in previous years, but instead they, uh, they've killed it off a couple of times.
Called last night and told it didn't pass it because, no matter, I'm just anxious to hear what Craig has to say.
Okay, uh, the last action that's reported on the South Dakota Legislative Research Council's website is that the House of Representatives approved a do-pass Resolution forty-four to twenty-two.
Great. Glad it was incorrect information I received.
The beauty of the internet. We can have real-time answers.
Heard the riot act she was going to read.
I was working on that.
Any other questions that I can ask?
Other questions for Craig this morning?
Well, we certainly appreciate all the hard work folks have been doing in Pierre and how the hard work you've been doing monitoring what they've been doing in Pierre. So thank you very much for keeping us informed.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, so that takes us to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning? Commissioner Karski?
Uh, at seven-thirty, Commissioner Heiburger and I met with the Public Defender Advisory Board. And we, I thought we had a, a good meeting. Um, still early in the year, budget's on track. They have their draft annual report. It will be filed with the commission after maybe a few edits to it, but for the most part, it, it's pretty well ready to go. Thought they did a good job with the information in there. Um, two items of note. One is staffing for the Public Defender with the growth of the community, of the county, et cetera, is always just like the state's attorney and the public advocate, always an issue, but their fault. I mean, they can't, you know, add any more people over there or not without blowing out the walls and doing an addition basically or moving them. Uh, but the all, the other issue they also face is, um, there's only so many people that you can effectively supervise. So, you know, looking forward in the near future, being maybe two, three years down the road, we probably will be looking at other options or having to consider other options for the Public Defender's office. Maybe a third, like we have the Public Defender, Public Advocate, maybe a third office of that nature, um, that would do overflow or excess, or I don't know what the proper term is, but it's just kind of a look forward. It, nothing, you know, that's going to happen in the next, sure, not within the next twelve months, but maybe, you know, three or four years down the road, we may have to be looking at options for that office. The other thing that came as a surprise to me, um, individuals that have to go before, um, the judge for not paying child support are being jailed. And it's a civil issue, but we have up to, well, uh, from what I understand, an average of twelve people a day in our jail, um, for not paying child support. It seems to me that there would be a much more effective way to, um, encourage child support payments rather than throwing people in jail. payments rather than throwing people in jail. I did the math, 12 people a day at our going rate of $95, that's costing the taxpayers of Minnehaha County $400,000 plus to put these people in jail. Not to mention the social cost of, you know, these people most likely have jobs, they can't go to work, they probably have maybe a second family, and, and, you know, there's just all sorts of issues that come up, but in my mind, putting them in jail just is not solving the problem that needs to be addressed. So, just a heads up what it's costing and what's going on.
All right, thank you for that. Any other liaisons? Commissioner Heiburger?
I'd just say Jeff and I last year attended the National Association of County Commissioners Legislative Session in Washington, DC. I spent my first day doing work for the Justice and Public Safety Committee where we just sit and talk about policy, and also had some speakers came in that talked about grant opportunities. And I think we were updated several times about the virus by different, but that's all outdated now since it was over a week ago. We were, also had a special, a lot of special speakers in our general sessions. The president came and spoke to us, and Colin Powell also, also talked to us. Just a lot of information to digest, and I think Jeff's probably got more to say, too. We attended different breakout sessions, and they weren't really breakout sessions, they're more committee meetings at this, at this convention, and so, a lot of different committee meetings.
What makes you think I'd have more to say? And let me first say, in planning and zoning, that we did have an appeal of a decision to allow Wild Water West to have a roller coaster. That was appealed by the Blue Apron Barn, which is next door. In any case, going back to our conference in DC, which was, again, always, you know, it's hard to remember everything that happened out there, but it's right here in the scrapbook, and it'll help us make better decisions going forward. I went to sessions, breakout sessions on veterans' issues, which I touched on a little bit earlier with Dr. Snell. One additional issue is that some communities are having trouble counting veterans who are deployed overseas because no one is putting them as part of their household. They might live by themselves, but they're part of our community when they're, when they're here. One county said that they had 20,000 undercount in their county because they have 95,000 active-duty military in their county. There's also some new benefits that have been passed for folks who have been damaged Agent Orange-wise and that kind of thing. And again, you know, the suicide numbers, everybody thinks of Iraqi veterans as being, you know, on the front line of suicide issues, but it's actually older, older people. For women, the ages were younger, it was 25 to 35. For men, it was 55 to 72. And of course, there are always efforts to take care of veterans in our communities. There's the issue which we've long had, where going into jail, people lose their, their medical benefits, whether it's veterans or Medicaid, Medicare. And there are bills working to stop that gap. You know, someone that goes into our jail with a mental problem, and they have their, their meds from the VA hospital, we take them away from them, and they get perhaps a different prescription from our doctor, which throws them head over heels. And then they get out two weeks later, for time served, maybe, and they're back on the other meds, and again, it's topsy-turvy. And so, we can do better. The feds are working on it. I went to a four-hour deal, which included free lunch. After Donald Trump spoke, I went right to lunch. Everyone else was starving. On counties with military bases on them. And so in our case, of course, we have the, the air guard. And a large part of that discussion was about PFAs and PFOs, which are chemicals used in firefighting. And the feds are cutting it out. They're not using them, those chemicals in training anymore. They're, and they're planning on not having it at all in the future. But at the same time, these chemicals are persistent in the groundwater, and that's one of the reasons why Sioux Falls is no longer pumping from the wells up by the airport. They're measured in parts per trillion, which was not possible in years gone by. They could not measure parts per trillion. And they found, for, this is, you know, that cattle that are given water with PFOs in them, their milk has it in them. But cranberries grown in it do not. So, anyway, the feds have programs to clean this up, the DOD, the EPA, et cetera. Ramsey County, Minnesota, they're pumping the water out and treating it and using the heat from that water, because it's underground, to heat a couple dozen houses in their, in their community. So it's a little bit of overlap. But they had a 3M plant, and they had a armory and ammunition dump. Also went to breakout on recycling. They think that in just a couple of years with computers that sort optically, that much more will be able to be recycled. Colin Powell was brilliant. We also had the Secretary of the Interior and what is Secretary Carson, is he Health and Human Services or?
Housing. Housing. He talked to.
Anyway, I had my own prejudices on those things, but I did stay through the whole speeches. Colin Powell had a good point, and I used this when I first ran. He said, "If you have two people that agree on every item, you don't need one of them. So why have five commissioners with one opinion? Only one person is right." Anyway, again, it's impossible to recount all the information that we absorbed, and a lot of it was to do with networking and meeting people and talking about issues in their counties. Talked to a commissioner from Georgia, and his county gets one penny of sales tax, plus they have property tax. So I mean, it's a lot of differences out there, and I appreciate you guys letting me go.
All right, great. Well, thank you for those updates. Are there any other liaison reports? Commissioner Benega?
Just one short conversation. Today, we're gonna review 15 applications for the remodel or replacement of the Highway Department through the construction manager at-risk process, so I'm sure Mr. Karski and I spent most of last night going through that pile of paper to come up with some recommendations, but we'll talk more about that in the future.
Great. I appreciate it. I saw that list, and I figured you guys were gonna have a busy night, so thank you for that work. All right. There are no other liaison reports? Is there any new business? If not, any old business? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, very much.